You're watching Medfield TV. Tonight, Dr. Marsden is gonna open up the meeting.
It is our annual reorganization of the school committee. So it's the one meeting a year in which I begin the meeting and... We're good on the camera? We're good? Okay. It's the one meeting a year in which I start the meeting and I look for a motion to appoint a chair of the school committee for the next year. Have a motion.
I have a motion to appoint Ame O'Shea Brook for chair for the next year.
Have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now I turn it back over to you.
Thank you. So do we have a motion for vice chair?
I make motion to appoint Jess Riley as vice chair.
Great. Do we have... Can I just list them or shall we vote after each one?
After each one. Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Recording secretary?
I'd like to nominate Tim Knight for that position.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful. Finance secretary nomination.
I'd like to nominate Megan Glenn for that position.
I second.
He wanted to get off that one quick. Oh yeah, quick, someone seconded it.
On favor?
Aye.
Great.
Aye.
And a legislative secretary?
I nominate Leo for legislative secretary.
Lovely.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we have a newly appointed reorganization for our board.
Agreed.
This time, we will open it up to public input. Great. And citizens at this time may address... Sorry? May address the committee on items of school business not on the agenda. The committee will take such items under advisement without action at the meeting during which the item is presented.
Thanks so much.
Hi.
Chris McHugh Potts, 7th Curb Street. I just, you know, don't know how many people are familiar with mediation and the spirit of mediation and what that's supposed to be intended to do, that process. But I just want to make sure that it's entered into the minutes as a record that what the executive session was supposed to, what was supposed to be, was supposed to take place, that it was misrepresented because there was no litigation. And anyone reading that executive session description would have come to the wrong conclusion. So I would like to make sure that for the record that I believe in the spirit of mediation and that the way that that was represented on the agenda was not in the spirit of mediation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So before we continue with our, with our agenda, I do want to note that by direction of the attorney general and our attorneys later, late today around 4:00 PM, the matter that was scheduled to be discussed in executive session will now be discussed in open session. Alright, now we will go with the minutes.
That is you, Madam Recording Secretary.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to...
Passed.
To make it a, yeah, right, am I the recording secretary?
Yeah, but you're free to make a motion.
To approve the minutes as listed in the agenda, is that okay? Or do you want me to go through?
Why don't we go through the dates? Do you feel okay about that?
Sure. Okay, here we go, thank you Jess. The approval of the minutes from the school committee meetings of 8:22, 2019, 6:03, 2019, 5:20, 2019, 4:29, 2019, 4:01, 2019, and 3:11, 2019, as well as the minutes for the executive session meetings of 6:03, 2019, 4:01, 2019, 3:11, 2019, 6:04, 2018, 5:14, 2018, 4:30, 2018, 3:12, 2018, 2:12, 2018, 1:29, 2018, 1:08, 2018, 8:28, 2017, 9:18, 2017, 11:06, 2017, 12:18, 2017, and 12:04, 2017. And finally, the school committee workshop, 6:20, 2019.
Yes, not 20, yes.
I second. I move to approve? Or you moved to approve? I moved to second.
You seconded it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All approved, okay. Yay, we're caught up.
Yes.
And these can be on the website.
Yes. We're up tomorrow.
ASAP, that is awesome, thank you very much. Very pleased about that. New business, student enrollment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet, you have the most up-to-date student enrollments, as you can see. And they also included in there the NESDEC responses, NESDEC, excuse me, predictions for projected enrollment for the next few years. You'll see that we didn't really reach the number that they were originally looking for when we were... We've talked about with MSBA and others, so I don't seem to have my...
Would you like to go?
I got it right here, no, sorry, thank you. Just wanted to highlight what we have in certain grade levels. So our kindergarten is getting there with 195, certainly a big group. But that large group, as you can see, we're gonna graduate 206 this year. We don't hit the 200s again until the current grade four, and the current grade three also at 200. But we're teetering around 200 on some of these other grade levels, but not to the extent that we're looking at in terms of projections. So we have to keep watching the real estate and watching what happens in terms of the building in the community because we could go up very quickly. You'll see the class sizes are pretty good all through. I just want to make one note. When you look at the middle school and you see the 7th and 8th grade and you see those numbers and you say, "Wow, those are small classes." So those are the homeroom classes that we added. In 7th and 8th grade, we add foreign language to that mix as well for a homeroom, which you don't do in 6th grade. So the real class size in middle school is between 17, 19, 20, that's what it really is. So when you see some of those numbers of 13, 14, 15, those aren't the real class sizes. Those are just the homeroom and advisory class sizes because we put additional specialists in the mix to give them a homeroom. So you'll see that, and you can see the difference there. Grade 6 has 192 students, grade 8 has 195, so only a difference of 3. But look at the difference in the class sizes because we add the foreign language in there for the homeroom purpose. We do have a couple of classes that, like advanced math, accelerated math would be 27 or so kids, which would make the other math classes during that period a little smaller. But I just didn't want you to think that we had 11 and 12 kids in a lot of our classes, it's just not the case. So we're at 26, 29 is our enrollment. I think I told Pete Peterson when he asked me at the Board of Selects meeting on Tuesday night, I think I told him 26, 43, for some reason I had that in my head, but it's 26, 29. There's our current enrollment, which includes 28 out of district students at this point. Alright. And then this is, the NESDEC projection was just a good one to have. I know we put it in our budget binder each year, but it's just a good one to hold on to to get a sense of what the projections are going forward. Again, MSBA ones are very similar to NESDEC. And we've talked about, NESDEC at some point has almost 300, or 300 students in a 3rd grade class coming up, so we'll have to wait to see if that happens. But we've, Michael and I have talked to Amy and we are getting an appointment this fall and meeting with a modular company, just to get a sense of what that would look like if we had to add modulators over at Memorial. We're not, we're hoping we're not gonna have to do that, but we want to be prepared in case we do get that influx of kids at that age level that we'll be able to house them appropriately and not go to the other option, which would be to get rid of full-day kindergarten to house the kids. We don't want to go backwards on that, so... That's all I have on that item.
I guess the way I've always thought about the projection numbers also is that you literally cannot specifically say from year to year how many kids will be here. But that, the difference we have right now is one set of apartment buildings opening. It's not like it's these huge numbers that you're like, "There's no way we would get there." Maybe that opening date shifts six months and those kids are not enrolling this year, but all of a sudden we get socked with 45 more than we thought the year after. So I think it's really about trying to understand your averages over time and not being so specifically focused on one year at a time.
And I think that happened with the park development too, so that that opened up in October. So we really started getting enrollment October, November, December, when those apartments opened up. So I think that's something we have to keep in consideration when some of the new units open up as well.
Great. Class sizes look good.
They are, they're very good. Really happy with us.
Great. Next is increased substitute teacher pay. Yay!
I know, thank you, Madam Chair. So this has been something that we've been talking about for a while. I know that we've had some concerns with the lack of substitutes, which I can tell you is universal in the state right now. It's really a function of a booming economy where people are working and they're not looking for substitute teaching positions. So that's been something that we've been talking about for the last couple of years. But we've looked at other districts around us and what they've been paying because as, we have a system that allows people to sign up electronically to substitute and then sometimes people are going to other districts the day before because they're getting paid more money. So we're starting to lose substitutes based on the amount of money that other districts are paying. So we thought it would be a good idea that it was about time for us and we built this in anticipating this is gonna happen in the fall. We built this into the budget so that we'd have additional money there. We're looking to increase our substitute pay to $90 a day, which will be very similar as you see in your packet, the rate comparison. Ashland is at 85, Needham is at 117, Weston at 100, Millis 90, Dedham 90, Medway 95, Huffington 80, Walpole 80 to 90, Canton 75 to 80, Dover Sherburne 95. So we typically lose people to Dover Sherburne, Westwood, Medway, those towns really close to us. So we want to be competitive in that regard, so we think this is gonna help in that direction. We'll assess it and we'll get a sense of whether it helps or not. But we'll figure that out by the end of the school year and then during the budget season, if we think we need to raise it again, we'll make that a priority. But I'm asking for you to approve that $90 a day, which we can implement tomorrow if we need to, but I think it's important. You know, it's not just, teachers get sick. I mean, they, as my friend Bonnie says, they work in petri dishes all day. So they do get sick and we would need to make sure that we have a competent person in there working with your children when they're not there.
What are we paid currently?
Seventy-five. And what's the aggregate and what's the projection over the year? What's the... Do you know what that is, Michael?
We estimated around 45, 40 last year.
Forty-five thousand.
And that's for people who showed up?
Correct.
Right? Sometimes we couldn't get a sub, so...
And that still happens.
Yeah.
We don't get subs, so that's still an issue. And the other piece too is that in the new teaching assistant contract, they do get paid now to substitute for teachers, so, you know, that's part of it too.
Great. And hopefully this will make a difference, but I appreciate that we'll assess this again and measure it and see if we are still competitive. Because I've definitely heard a lot about substitute pay.
It's really... You do, yes.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, you do.
So do we have a motion to approve the increase to $90 per day?
I motion to approve.
Second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll share some of that data in June with you so you get a sense of what it looks like and whether it made a difference or not for us. Thank you.
Great. Accept Board appointment?
So Accept Board and Tech Board, those are, these are the yearly appointments that you do. I sit on both of those, but in order for me to be officially a voting member, the school committee needs to approve those. So I would ask that you vote for both of those so that we could get a letter to both Tech and Accept and I can be back on the board. So thank you.
Alright, so do we have a motion to approve Dr. Marsden's appointment to the Tech and Accept Board?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
FY19 closeout.
Michael? Talk a little bit about the FY19? Yeah, please.
So we just finished the closeout for the fiscal of 2019. We've been working really closely with the town accountant and the assistant accountant to just go through all the numbers. We have to work closely together because all those numbers are part of our end-of-year report, which we have completed. We are doing final review before we submit. Submission date is usually October 1st, but we are ready to submit once we have a final review on that and that should be hopefully done by the beginning of next week. That will be submitted to the state and then I would think next school committee will, I'll be back in front of you to just go over that, those numbers for the end-of-year report. I'll talk about the per pupil cost and, because that's gonna be part of that end-of-year report, the average teacher salary that's being reported, the number of students, and then the different categories of expenses that we have to report to the state. This year's report actually has a couple more schedules that we had to fill out incomplete for the state and I'll just talk about those schedules also because those affect grant opportunities for the town of Medfield. So I'll go through all that with the committee.
Schedule 19 is always a good one to go through too because that shows that the town charges back. So they charge us for plowing, those types of things, so that's all, you know, all part of that.
Correct. So there's new requirements for grants that I, I think it's important that, you know, the school committee knows about. There's a percentage of whatever our grants are have to go to private schools within the district and I'll talk about that and how that's calculated. But all those numbers are done, we're just doing a final review on them and then we'll present to the school committee. If you have any questions, now I can answer the questions.
Are you talking about private schools within the district, meaning the...
Montrose.
Montrose.
Montrose, okay.
So, yes, so there's a new formula that we have to, that's part of the end-of-year report that calculates what percentage goes to Montrose from the funding that Medfield has given. And we have to provide those dollars and services to Montrose.
So let me give you an example. For special education, our 240, this year we're projecting giving Montrose $17,000. It's not insignificant, that's for sure.
Alright.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, we look forward to the report. Townwide master plan update, Jessica Riley.
Thank you, I just wanted to kind of give an update on what is happening with the townwide master plan because I think that it's important that our constituency knows. In specific, because this is a 20-year plan and it's a full umbrella strategic plan for the town, meaning that it is not the important but smaller pieces of what we have as a town. It's not the hospital plan, it's not. It really is meant to be a vision for the next 20 years around what we do. And there's a very specific way that the state requires that we do this. Master plans have to, by law, include goals and policies and a statement of goals and policies for the town. It has to include land use, it has to include housing, which is obviously incredibly important to us. It has to include economic development, natural and cultural resources, which we're obviously struggling with right now. Open space and recreation, services and facilities, circulation, which I think is something that our town, the people I hear and things that I am speaking to are saying, you know, "It's getting more and more congested all the time." You know, as the kind of outer suburbs become more populated, we're becoming more of a root. And that affects our buses, that affects our kids, that affects many things. And then, most importantly to me, is implementation. How do we actually do this plan during the lean times and the, I like to think, kind of fatter times? And how do we find the low-hanging fruit? And how do we actually make Medfield a place that people want to come to, stay in, which I think is important for our elders and that people don't feel as though they have to just process themselves through simply for the schools? I don't think that makes a rich community and I think that it's generally across the board what people feel. The reason I bring this tonight is that the first public input session for the townwide master plan is happening on October 20th, which is a Sunday evening at 5:30 PM, 5:30 to 7:30, or 5:00 to 7:30. And it is a visioning statement in which we will take input from the entire town, whoever is there. It's an open kind of meeting in which you will be doing kind of smaller workshops and breakouts. We will also have sessions for kids, they're welcome, and we will be working with them to talk them about what they see their town as being and becoming. And there will be the usual, like, "Please come, we've got pizza" kind of part of it as well. But that will be at the Blake Middle School Cafeteria. And I know certainly, as a committee member, I will be pushing the publicity around that because I think it's really important, if we really think about the core group of people who may be choosing to live here or maybe just starting to live here, their children are young and they haven't really got into the swing of townwide kind of politics and vision. But they're the ones who are gonna be carrying the load of this for the next 20 years. So I really want to make sure that our constituency, the people that we are specifically supposed to be focusing on, which are the parents and the children of our school district, really have a voice in this and are also able to partner and spend more time with the various constituencies. I think that I would really like to see our town be able to come together and that makes me a little idealistic, but you don't really do this work unless you're a little idealistic. So, there's 16 members of the committee, 10 of them, approximately, nine to 10 of them are town board and committee representatives, but the others are citizens at large. So it's kind of a really nice mix and I think that we've been able to get along and really make some decisions pretty quickly, actually. And I feel like we're kind of rolling in a direction that I think we feel like is really positive and we want to make sure we're bringing everybody else with us, so... Does anybody have any questions about the townwide master plan that you can think of right now or...
Will you do a flyer for that, do you think, or, because I could send that to all the parents?
Absolutely, so we'll do a flyer. I think we're trying to pin down the final parts around the kids workshops. We do have a fantastic logo, which was really a very nice collaboration. It was a collaboration between Tom Sweeney from the Senior Center, who does some of the most beautiful pen and ink drawings I've seen.
Yeah, it looks great.
And a graphic artist who then took his ideas and kind of brought them to the more kind of logo-appropriate, I think. But I think it's really great.
It's good.
So, and if anybody really wants to see information, it's on the town website, but I've noticed that the town website needs to be updated a little bit and I'm gonna bring that to Christine's attention tomorrow, so...
Perfect.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Well, thank you for serving on it because that is a huge, huge role. Didn't you meet a lot during the summer?
We met over the summer, we will be meeting, we've been meeting in subcommittee and we meet as a group once a month. And I can see it picking up considerably.
But thank you to you and all the other committee members.
I think we generally find it enjoyable. I'm not gonna go too far with that, but I think that we're a good working group.
Wonderful, thank you very much, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, school committee office hours.
Oh yay.
So, I have some dates here and where you'll see a blank, I'm still waiting for confirmation and I'll send this via electronic anyways. I think what we talked about in one of our workshops, to have our office hours a bit more meaningful is that perhaps we'll focus it around a theme or a topic, subject, and also have a little Google form RSVP. So we're using our time efficiently and not, sometimes it's nice to just sit there with another member and catch up, but we all have lots to do. So maybe if we do an RSVP, we'll have a heads-up of who will show and that and we can run it a bit more efficiently. So these are the dates, I base this selfishly on, I've got days off on Friday and Thursday nights, I don't teach class, so anyways. But we'll just spread the love amongst ourselves.
Right, and I think that it's important to note that even if it is at a specific school, that does not mean that only parents from that school can come. We just try to spread essentially the comfort zone around and also make sure that we're showing up in every school and that people know who we are and why we're there.
Yeah, absolutely, and it's good for us to be in different schools. So our first one is Friday, October 4th at 10:00 AM at Memorial in the conference room.
And Ame, are you thinking, so you encourage RSVP and if there's any topics they want to cover?
Yeah.
Is that what you would...
Yeah.
I think we're gonna state the topics in general, right? I mean, people could come in for any topic if they really want to, but if there's an area of focus that you're interested in.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So I think this first one is really just maybe highlights of the upcoming year. I got an email today from someone saying, you know, "I don't follow social media, I just really want to talk to a school committee member and see, you know, what are the hot topics of the year." And I thought, "That's a great theme, but you don't have to wait for the office hours. Any one of us will be happy to make arrangements to meet with anyone," so I think we're gonna go with that.
Is it, so if you're gonna put something out, like a Google Docs, that people sign up?
An RSVP, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a form, one of those forms.
Is it worth, just at the beginning, saying, "Are there any topics that we could bring to you?"
For sure, yeah.
And just see if anyone comes back and then these dates would have whatever that topic is.
Exactly, great, yeah.
I mean, I think certainly during budget season and when we're getting towards the portion of the Dale Street project in which there's public input, we'll certainly make those. But there's also always the opportunity of really getting feedback and talking to Dr. Marsden at the superintendent's parent advisory sessions, which he's gonna put out, I think, in the next few weeks.
Yeah.
They're online right now.
Oh.
There'll be a link to it on my blog.
Look at that.
Shazam.
Shazam.
Alright, great. Discussion of mediation, here we go. So as you know, Chris McHugh Potts has filed roughly nine or so open meeting law complaints and mediation has now been, has been scheduled for October the 11th. And at this time, I'd like to suggest a subcommittee consisting of Dr. Marsden, Michael LaFrancesca, Jessica Riley, and myself. And so do we have a motion to approve this subcommittee?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a second? Okay. Leo, thank you. And right, we have to take a roll call vote for this, so...
Jessica Riley, Chair, Vice Chair?
Megan Glenn. My name is...
Financial. It's hard to get to a roll.
I know, financial secretary.
Financial sector.
Leo Brum, Legislative Secretary.
Yes.
Tim Knight, I think it's just secretary, is that correct?
It is just...
Recording secretary.
Recording secretary.
And Ame O'Shea, that's the Chair. Alright. Was that it for that one? Okay. And now, old business.
Thank you, Madam Chair, donations. Do we have any donations?
Yeah. Two.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, right, yes.
Hello, everyone.
Alright. So I ask you to accept the following donations. $65 donation from the Angel Fund to the Wheelock Field Trip to Roger Williams Zoo and $12,667.75 donation from the Wheelock PTO for the Wheelock Playground. I ask that you approve those as presented.
Motion to approve?
A second?
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful.
And thank you, PTO. And literally every time I look at the word, the acronym PTO, I really have to remember that that is parent and caregiver. That that is really hard work from many people and kind of slogging their way through small donations to make a very big difference. So, thank you out there in TV land.
Wonderful. Superintendent's report to the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet, you had a letter from our OPM that was sent to MSBA and it highlighted that we have eight different firms that have put into proposals to be our design firm for Dale Street. So Mike Quinlan, Leo and I are the three members of the school building committee that will be a part of the design proposal board. So we'll be going to MSBA and meeting with them and then we'll come out of that meeting with an approved board, so, with an approved design firm. So Leo and I are gonna be going over some of these, Leo just got his tonight, all the design firms and then we'll, we'll meet, I think the school building committee is supposed to meet, I think, next Monday night, but I'm not positive.
Monday night at 7:00.
And then we'll be going over the process there and then we'll go into the meeting October 15th and we'll come out of there with a design firm, so we're excited about that. about that. All the firms that I listed on this memo all have a great experience. So, we just need to kind of look at what their experience is and how it fits into what we need in a new school. So, that's all part of that process. So, we're looking forward to that. It's an interesting process because we only have three votes, but the MSBA design board has, is it twelve, Michael, or fifteen?
There you go.
How many, how many votes does MSBA?
Fifteen total.
So, twelve. So, they have twelve votes, and we only have three. So, hopefully, we're going to see eye to eye during that meeting. But that's, we'll come out with the design. But this, this is along with everything else, because of our new website, we're able to post all the documents from the school committee meeting very quickly. It was a chore last year when we had the other website, but we already have the documents up from the August meeting now. And tomorrow, we'll be putting these documents up. So, this will be all part of it. And this will also be easy for people to see. So, if they want to look at the information that we have here for the building project, it's all right there on the website. So, we're happy to do that.
This is great news.
And then, Madam Chair, I only had two informational items. One was just a response to you regarding the public input from the last meeting, that Leo had asked me to do some of that. And then, there's also a email that is from citizen Chris McHugh Potts that was sent to Nancy Benati for the Board of Health, talking about an issue at Wheelock School. So, I thought it was important that you had that. But that's, that's all I have for informational items, Madam Chair.
Okay. Great. Our next meeting is October seventeen. And at this meeting, we are going to have, at six PM, the superintendent evaluation training with Dorothy Presser from MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, which is great. And at this time, we'll have some updates. Campbell, welcome official.
Campbell, thank you so much. Excited. First one up here.
Senior year. Can't believe it.
It's great. So, kind of going off the senior year. Great way to start the year was the senior cruise, which was great. I saw Dr. Marsden there. It was a great event. Everybody had a lot of good feedback with that, I think.
Oh, good.
Probably, from what I've heard, the best event at high school so far from everyone I've talked to. From student council, we had the freshman dance, I think it was last weekend, which was the best one I've personally seen and met a lot of people. So, that was another great one. We had a lot of participation and good to see the new freshman class and kind of the excitement there. Also, this past weekend, we have student council volunteered at the Memo Kid Play Center, so, it's a rally area. But that was great to really help that organization at Medfield Day and just kind of with the community. It was a great day there. We had a lot of volunteers. And then, just elections in general over the past few weeks for freshmen have been going on, which has been great to get those new perspectives in student council and student government. We should have a new director of school committee for the student government here in a few weeks, which is great to kind of see, you know, new people here. Also, we have a car wash for September twenty-eighth just to raise more funds. And a lot of planning has been going into pep rally already and numerous other events, like our spirit dance and a few other events like that. So far, it's been a great year, I think, for the grading school in general. It's been a great start. So, it's about all I have to...
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Campbell.
Thanks, Campbell.
Do you know how much they raise, like, the car washes raise in general? Like, do you know what they've raised in the past? I'm not putting you on the, I'm not expecting you to have like a spreadsheet in your head. I'm just wondering if you have a ballpark idea.
Actually, I could probably...
You don't have to pull it up. It's really okay. Just wondering.
For example, field hockey made fourteen hundred dollars.
So, field hockey made fourteen?
I think it is, it is usually in that ballpark.
In that ballpark?
About...
Around a grand.
A grand is, I think, usually the idea. If we can get anywhere near that, it's a pretty good success, as long as we can get some funds raised for future events. Fourteen hundred, I think, would be a great number.
Yeah, I think that was their record number. So, they were very psyched.
Pretty big.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
I just, you mentioned student council a few times.
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about that and more just like how often do they meet, who's on it?
So, yeah, so, student council is, well, I've been in it all four years of high school so far. And it's a great experience. It's about ten students per grade now, I think, because we've raised the walk-ons. So, I think we have a few more walk-ons now. And it's once per week in Room 125, the wellness room, which is every morning on Wednesdays, and we meet there. And it mostly focuses on fundraising and whole-school-wide events, kind of bringing just some enthusiasm to the school day and just a lot of fun stuff like the spirit dance and a lot of stuff with freshmen, especially at the beginning of the year. But it's a kind of another great way to get involved, especially if you're coming in freshman year, to just get into Medfield High School.
Thanks, Campbell. Welcome.
Super. Campbell, just one question. And I know we talked about it a little bit last year about where students go to give feedback, you know, and kind of like either a suggestion box or, I would love to just, you know, kind of hear more of the student voice and how, I mean, ultimately, we're all here because of you guys. And so, I'd love to just, and I know you're one person out of the entire student body. However, I think you've got a pulse on things. And so, if we could...
And a pulse.
That, that would be, I would love to hear more. I'd love to hear the fundraising. You know, you're all doing great things and whatnot. But really, what's, what's happening? What's, what's the vibe or what's a sample of the vibe?
I wonder if, would it be helpful if we, you know, kind of in the few weeks before a meeting or whatever, really asked you a specific question and that you could kind of maybe think about data for it? I don't know if you guys want to think about this, but really kind of be able to reach out in your student council meetings, but also, you know, when you're sitting at lunch or you're hanging out in Spanish or Mandarin or whatever.
Like last year, we asked about feedback for the homework policy. And I think that was very enlightening information for us. And that is still kind of, that information we received that night is still lingering now with us in our discussions. So, those are important things for us because you're in the trenches, and we'd love to hear from you.
I think that this is something that's a focus of ours this year, that we do want to make sure that we have more of a voice with, with the students and just so that you know that there's people listening. I mean, obviously, your teachers listen, superintendent listens, but we're the elected body, and your parents elected us for reasons.
Yeah. Now, similar to what Megan, you said, if the school committee meeting, you know, a week before, you say, hey, they've specifically asked, is there anything we want to share with them?
Definitely. Actually, I think that's a great idea.
Just putting that on here, you say, we do that once a month, the week before.
I think that'd be great.
We welcome it, and maybe we can also say, hey, we'd love your, like, if it was homework policy or other things would be, would be great. One I'd be interested in would be what's their feedback on mobile phones in school.
No, Tim, that's a great one.
That's a hot topic. Generally speaking, right? We all ask our kids, and we ask, we drive car pools, but, you know, just...
So, actually, that's first assignment, Campbell. Can you kind of, because actually, we get these calls and conversations with parents who have various views on cell phones. And so, what is the cellphone, we know what the cellphone policy is because we just signed off on it through the handbook, but how is it being implemented? How is it being received? That would be really fantastic.
Awesome. That has definitely been a big topic of discussion this year with the cell phone. So, I can definitely get used to.
Yeah, and I suppose...
Sorry?
What are they saying?
It's not necessarily bad stuff. Just like, there's definitely been an adjustment on like teacher policies with cell phones, whereas you, some teachers may have had some room for it. There's a lot less of that, definitely seen. Not in a, let's say, a bad way, just a lot of kind of wake-ups, especially for the seniors who have kind of grown accustomed over the past three years to, not really.
What?
Not necessarily it was like using it in class, just whereas you have to be more careful with it in your bag. So, it's definitely a bit of a shift, but nothing unmanageable.
All right. Super.
I look forward to hearing it.
Yep. The spirit of open dialogue is what we'd like. Thank you, Campbell. Tim, anything to report? Tim?
No, this is more open-ended. I see the new website's up. I've got the Medfield app. I love the video. It's a good way to promote it. So, hopefully, others will start using it.
So far, so good. Thanks.
God, us all here tonight.
Great start to the school year, we'll say. Kids have, what's that?
Got some reading.
Got some reading to do.
Yeah, some light reading.
Excited about that. That's going to be a great experience. Looking forward to that.
For your plane rides.
What's that?
For your plane ride.
That's right. Exactly. On Monday. And I'm looking forward to visiting the schools. I've planned some time with Dale Street and high school and meet with the curriculum folks. And so, I'm excited about getting in to visit. So, yeah.
Well, speaking of visiting, Tim and I walked into the same teacher's classroom at Pin Night, not knowing our kids were in the same class.
Yeah.
But they are, and they're doing amazing things over there. I mean, he's my last to go through, and every kid that experiences, it gets better and better and better and better. So, it was encouraging. And I did have, I have a new freshman that said that the dance was okay.
That's really good.
Oh, boy.
In my house, that is like amazing.
And I'm really trying to encourage him to be involved in the student council.
Don't say that on camera.
He thinks he's too busy with school and sports and...
It is great, though.
Find him. He's the tall one. Talk some sense into him. So, I don't want to snowplow mom, but...
Oh, for sure, no.
But yeah, things are September-ing along.
It is a verb, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. You know, I don't actually have any updates beyond the townwide master plan, except for if Leo, you don't mind, my, my last duty as legislative secretary is that this morning, to the job-dropping delight of people across the nation or just within our state, the Student Opportunity Act was actually released from committee and is now positively released from committee and is now going to go on to the state senate and then go back. And this is a reworking of the foundation budget that has not been reworked since, what, ninety-three?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three. And it essentially reflects the issues of inflation. Last year, we wrote a letter in support of this act. And part of that letter, if I remember correctly, was that one of the things that we, we asked for is that, that the state would consider special ed transportation as part of special ed expenses in terms of reimbursement. And I, I just thought that that was a pipe dream. But when I, when I looked at it, they actually put it in there.
It's in there.
So, over a four-year phase-in period. So, if I could, I would like to ask if we could discuss and consider writing another letter in support of this bill. In general, is it going to, is the bill itself going to affect districts like ours in a large way? Probably not. We will continue to be Medfield of the high tax base, low commercial, but we look as though we're doing pretty well. But these smaller budget, or these smaller issues within this bill could help us significantly. It also gives more funding for guidance and for psychology and emotional, it's the specific language around it. But it does give more support for that, which has also been an issue. And also lifts the annual cap on the MSBA building authority, which is also another issue.
It's a big one for us.
That is huge for us because there will be repairs coming up that we are going to need some help with. So, I can't see a disadvantage necessarily to supporting it. I can certainly see many advantages, not only for our town, but for towns across the state, to be able to modernize this bill. So...
I think a letter of support would be a great idea.
That would be great. It is, it's one of those things that needs to happen relatively quickly. It's going to the senate, and I think that they're going to start throwing it back within the next couple of weeks. This is that time of year. So...
It's a quick one.
If the rest of you feel as though that that's acceptable?
Yes.
Thank you. I would have made it an agenda item if it hadn't happened at eleven thirty-five this morning. So, thank you. And thank you, Leo, for letting me wrap that one up on my legislative watch. So...
Well done.
Thank you.
All right. Beautiful. And me, I, just some great PIN evenings and looking forward to a great school year. And just want to plug Yoga on the Turf on Sunday, the twenty-second, from twelve to one. It's part of Suicide Awareness Month. And the school committee is represented on the Medfield Coalition for Suicide Prevention. So, I'd just like to plug that in because I think it would be a beautiful community event on a lovely day.
Agreed.
And we've got Medfield Yoga Studio, who's...
People pay for that.
And it's free. It's donation only.
It's free hot yoga.
Indeed. So, hopefully, encourage people to come, all ages, all levels, no judgment.
You can buy a mattress while you're there.
Yeah.
Do that as well.
Bye, Ben.
Bye-bye.
All right.
So, I just, you know, we had a great start to the school year. I think our staff was, was ready to get back and did a wonderful, have done a wonderful job the last few weeks. We had a great kickoff. So, it's really going well. We're happy with, with the way things are going. Just want to thank Owen for his help with the website and working on that for the last six or seven months, eight months, it feels like almost a year with the app, too. And nice to finally release that. That was great. And, you know, we've got some bugs in it that we're going to work out, but the, the website is so much easier to work with. We can actually work from it and post our own stuff from the central office, which is great. Before, we used to have to email it to someone and wait for that to be posted. But now, we have, it's just such a user-friendly and nice, clean website. So, we're really excited about that. So, just a great start.
Beautiful. Most into adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Campbell.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Campbell. Campbell, we will move you out of Canada next time. We're going to work this out.
Done, great.
That's all you can do then?